Good evening. I'd like to call to order this regular town council meeting for Tuesday, November 23rd, 2021. Please rise for a moment of silence. Have the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Fishbein, Laughlin, Marone.
Here.
Morganstein, Shortell.
Here.
Tada.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Zandry.
Here.
And Chairman Cervoni.
Here.
Can I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we move items 3A through 3H and 3K and 3L.
What about 3J?
And 3J, if you insist.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, those items moved on the consent agenda passed. Onto item 3I, which is to consider and approve a job description for the deputy fire chief. And we have the fire chief and human resources here. Evening, gentlemen. If you could please introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening. Joe Sutton, our chief of fire services.
Yes, good evening. Jim Hutt, town HR director.
Thank you. Counselor Shortell, this was your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chief. Good evening, Mr. Hutt.
Good evening.
Thanks for coming out. So this is one of those things where, as a counselor, you deal with so many different department heads and department and functions that I don't know anything about, or as a layperson, and so I feel hesitant to ever question, on the one hand, but on the other hand, sometimes I see things and I feel like it does warrant just some further information. So on this job description, I saw it on consent and I looked it over. First of all, I think it's a really good job description. I've dealt with job descriptions in my day job. I've been in management for over a decade and I've had to work with HR to write them. And at my company, the job description is like, maybe, if you're lucky, 50% of what the job really does. So this is very detailed. But the devil's in the details, as they say. So my question on this one is really just with one thing. It looks like when we get to the minimum qualifications, the word career has been inserted. So it reads, high school diploma or the equivalent, plus 10 years of progressively responsible career, fire department services, I'm sorry, experience, services was redlined, experience, including at least four years as an officer, and this part is new, in a career fire department. And then it goes on to what it was before, any combination of experience and training, which provides a demonstrated potential for performing the duties of the class. So does that mean what I think it means? If I'm a volunteer firefighter, do I need not apply? If I have a lot, like if I had experience, like as a volunteer for a number of years and I decide that I'd like to apply?
Counselor, I don't think it has any bearing on that. What we're looking for is, previously, it was Wallingford Fire Department.
Okay.
That's where the description was in there. Now it's been expanded and I'll let the HR director comment on the testing process and the reason why we went to this component over here. But the change was from Wallingford Fire Department to Career Department. And the reason for that is, we're looking for the best candidate for the position based on the knowledge, skills, and abilities. In 10 years in a career fire department, we'd be able to be, with a requisite experience, with the type of department that we have, with the size of the community that we have, and the type of work that we do. We look at it with the knowledge, skills, and abilities, and, you know, it wouldn't be relegated to whether it was a volunteer or a career, but as long as you have thorough knowledge of modern firefighting methods, thorough knowledge of EMS delivery methods, the regulations, the equipment, thorough knowledge of hazardous materials operations, thorough knowledge of technical and specialized rescue operations, that includes confined space, vehicle extrication, high and low angle rescue, machinery extrication, water and ice rescue, knowledge of municipal purchasing processes, and I can go on and on. And most of that's from experience and the type of work that you're performing.
So let me just piggyback on that. We did run an exam for this position not that long ago, and the recruitment was an internal promotional process, limited to career firefighters in the town of Wallingford. That process was not successful. The position needs to be filled. And based upon the last group of applicants, the limited number of applicants, we felt that we need to expand this to include some applicants from outside the town of Wallingford, Career Fire Department.
Okay, but there's two issues. So that, first of all, thank you both. That helps me. But there's two issues here. The Walling, I get the Wallingford aspect of this. The Wallingford Fire Department is promoting from internally, from our organization, our town. And you're taking, you're striking that, that is struck in one line. But in another line, Wallingford's not in here. It simply says, plus 10 years of progressively responsible, and the word career is inserted, fire department. So I understand, you have to cast a wider net outside of Wallingford. But I'm gonna, you know, if I'm, if I'm a volunteer firefighter for 10 years, 12 years, 15 years, I have a day job, I do something else during the day, for various personal reasons, I can't be a career firefighter at that point in my life. But then I reach a point, after all that, all that time, where I could be, and I apply for this job, is that gonna disqualify, am I gonna even get by HR? If I have no, if all my experience is in a volunteer role?
If, if an applicant does not have 10 years of career firefighter experience, they will not be qualified for the exam. Just like they would if, you know, this was a strict promotional test.
Right.
They need 10 years in the Wallingford Fire Department, four years as an officer. So it was limited to that group of individuals.
So if my day job, I mean, if I got, if I had experience in my day job, if I was a volunteer firefighter and I did, I was in management, I was involved in labor relations, I did all these other things, I was involved in all these other things, but I didn't have any experience as a career firefighter, you're saying I would be, I would not be able to apply, whereas I would be able to apply before this change?
No.
No?
No. So you also have to look at, not just the minimum qualifications, but the special requirements.
Okay.
And so they need to be an EMT, Connecticut driver's license, a pretty, you know, standard requirement. They need to be certified as a fire officer one. They need certification as a fire instructor one. So there's certain certifications, and I'll let the chief speak to that, that are exclusive to the fire service. So if you had outside management experience, but you probably wouldn't have these qualifications.
So volunteer firefighters can't, don't have these, because they don't have these licenses?
No, some of them do. Some of them do have that qualification, those certifications. However, we're looking at command experience. So you may be in management in a private industry. However, command experience is a strong requisite for having this role. It's not just managerial skills. And in order to gain that type of, that type of experience, you have to be put into that where you have the opportunities to be commanding various type of incidents, as I described earlier.
What might help is, perhaps you can just describe, when you say command, you're talking about someone as a deputy who's taking over at an incident and knowing how to function under a lot of pressure, the stress, the confusion. Why don't you?
Right. Well, you know, with, with something like this here, not everybody aspires to be an administrative fire chief. And that has a lot of different responsibilities. You have the managerial that I described, then you have the command, being able to direct people at all times of emergency incidents, where life, property is all at risk. And that comes through experience. It doesn't happen overnight. It's not a God-given talent. That's through experience. And that's through succession of working your way up, being a company officer for several years, being a commanding officer, commanding a platoon, commanding several companies. Typically, you go to a fire incident, and you go to a larger scale incident, you're probably commanding seven, eight different companies. And that is, that comes with a lot of time and experience to do that. Like I said, we're looking for, you know, it's not a volunteer or a career thing or a Wallingford thing. What we're looking for is the best qualified candidate for this position. It's a highly responsible position.
Underst, thank you. Understood. I know you're gonna kill me. If I'm an Iraqi war vet, and I had command experience from the war, and I came home from the war, and I worked for 20 years, you know, and I, and I had all this other experience, and I served for 20 years as a volunteer firefighter, I mean, you're saying I could not apply for this job?
I'm not saying that.
Well, the rule, these requirements say that. If I'm reading the requirements correctly, because you just said, if I, if you don't have 10 years in a career fire department. So under that scenario, an Iraqi war vet who had command experience under a different kind of fire, could not apply for this job?
He could apply.
Wouldn't be, wouldn't get past, wouldn't get past you.
That's correct.
What, um, let me back up for a minute. So let me just make this even easier. Was it, with these changes, because all these special requirements are new, correct? They're all under, I mean, I, my copy isn't, it's not a color copy, it's, but it's, they're underlined. So I'm assuming that if it's underlined and bold, it's new. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So these special requirements weren't here?
Well, if you look, so if you go to the last page.
Yep.
There's a lined out section that says certification, fire suppression.
Yep.
Or emergency medical services. That was there before. And so what this change is to articulate a little bit more clearly to, to an outside applicant, this is what you need to have.
Okay. So, so is it, again, let me ask a simple, much more simple, if this goes through, is it easier or harder for a volunteer firefighter to apply for this job than it was before?
The same, I believe.
It's the same. Okay. And why, why did we make these changes? I guess I'm just trying to understand, like, what was the point of putting the word career into the job description?
It was already there. If you, if you look at the strikeout, it says the Wallingford Career Fire Department.
Correct. This is Wallingford Career, but that was also because it was in Wallingford. They were only, they were only casting the net inside Wallingford, and it was career, you're right. But I'm just curious why it stayed. If you're trying to get the best possible applicant, I feel like you're, you're not casting a wide net by making it, I guess I just feel like in all these scenarios I'm throwing out, that there could be people out there. I'm not saying there's a lot. I understand that. But I feel like there could be people out there who are absolutely qualified, and they have a combination of firefighting experience and non-career experience. And that you're, this seems exclusionary to me. But I, maybe I'm misreading it.
I think, what, what might help, Chief?
I could, can I just say one thing? The, you have to look at recruitment and selection as a screening process.
Yep.
People get screened out through the process, right up until the end, when the names get submitted to the department head, and he picks one. So there's always gonna be someone who's selected and someone who's not. But, you know, before, even though this was limited to Wallingford Fire Department, it was just a career fire department. A volunteer could apply. We don't stop people from applying. But when we review their qualifications in line with the minimum requirements, they either meet those, or they don't. Those that don't, don't get passed further in the process.
Right. Yeah, I keep using the word apply, which I shouldn't. I don't mean they can't apply. I just mean that, like what you said, the screening process. And I, and I deal with that at work a lot, when people, I can't tell you how many times, no offense to HR, but how many times were you, you post a job, and then HR sends you the, you know, there's 50 applicants, they send you 20, and you have to screen them to interview, and then you have to go back out. You're like, well, can I have more? Then you start seeing the ones they didn't send you, and like, well, that's the one I want, that person has what I want. So anyway, it's, it got to the point where I just said, send them all to me. Don't even, you know, as long as they get by the background check. Okay. So the, so the big message, then the big change here would be, the Wallingford Career Fire Department has been eliminated and replaced with career only, so that we can cast a wider net to other fire departments. That's the big change, and that's what we should, I might be fixating too much on the volunteer thing.
That's correct.
Ha, okay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just, I think the requisite experience deals with how you would fight a given fire. It's not always, you know, pouring all the water on. It's, it's knowledge about the protocols, about who does what, and what order of things at the scene. And Chief, you're, you're the one who can?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's true, Mayor, and Counselor. I mean, that's, that's part of the job, is that experience of being thorough knowledge of those experiences. And like I said, about the managerial, there's labor relations requirements also that are skills in there. Come from a volunteer department, you may have labor relations, working with a bargaining unit in your private life, where you may be working. But that's a unique type of scenario that we, we also live in.
Okay. All right. Thank you both. I appreciate.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Sure. Before I move on to Counselor Marone, can I get a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve item 3I.
Yes.
On the consent agenda?
That's the motion to consider and approve the job description of the deputy fire chief. Thank you. Counselor Marone. Counselor Tada seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, when I saw this in the, in the meeting backup, it made sense to me. And I didn't have any questions until these sort of came up tonight. So I guess my only concern is that you've identified an issue trying to fill this role from internally, right? And so I can think of, you know, we have a sort of a unique situation, not terribly unique, but we have a unique situation where we have a hybrid volunteer and, and career fire department, where we have volunteer companies and paid companies in town. A lot of the neighboring towns have volunteer only, right? So I would think that a chief, say, in a volunteer department, would have many of the requirements that you're looking for here. And maybe not all of them. Obviously, you're gonna pick who you're gonna pick for the, for the role. Would the, would you be amenable to the idea of striking the word career from the, from the description?
Counselor, I don't really think that's the solution to this answer. And you're fixated on the volunteer-career combination department. Wallingford Fire Department is much more than that. It's, it's a hybrided system that the community enjoys here, because we're running paramedic engines, running transport ambulance, engine companies, specialized rescue that we have gone in here, and a volunteer division. So with all that, the management skills that are needed are specialized. So that's why we're looking specifically for somebody who has the requisite skills for it.
So it's hard for me to envision a scenario where, say, a chief in another town, obviously, they would, if they were chief of a volunteer department, they wouldn't have to deal with the labor relations and all the other things. But in terms of the, the command exposure and whatnot, I would assume that that would be roughly the, similar to a, a career deputy chief. Although, you know, I don't know that for certain. I guess the issue you identified in the beginning was that you were casting too narrow of a net, that you needed to widen the net. So I think the, the goal here is just to try to widen the net enough to get you the best possible candidate. So it just seems like an interest, like a weird thing to get hung up on. And I don't feel like I'm fixated on it. I just feel like, you know, your stated objective was to cast a wide net, and now you're sort of limiting yourself to, to career firemen.
I don't, I don't think I use the term cast a wide net. The term I use is look for a qualified pool of candidates.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else on the council? Any members of the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein. Sorry. Laughlin.
Marone.
Yes.
Morganstein. Shortell.
Yes.
Tada.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
And Chairman Cervoni.
Yes. Thank you. Passed.
Thank you very much. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Take care.
Item five, the public question and answer period. Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road, through the chair to the mayor.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, have you hired the consultant yet for the ARPA money?
No, we wouldn't be able to hire anyone until we appropriate funds, and that will require the council.
Do you have an idea when that's gonna happen?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, this is, this item's coming up on the agenda later.
Not these, not this part, the agenda item was different. It was whether you should have a committee to help with the mayor. It wasn't on dollars and cents.
I, I think what he is talking about is potentially beyond the agenda item. But thank you.
So, um, at the rate that you were paying, is this a one-year position or a four-year position? Do you have any idea?
No, it will be multiple years, probably, through the, through the years that the ARPA funds are available for expenditure and end when there's no more money to be appropriated.
So it could be a four or more year process?
Yes.
And at the rate that you were paying, or looking to pay, is this a one-year contract with this gentleman or group, organization, or is it?
We would be hiring them for the advice they would be giving over the period of time that is relevant, which would be 2024 or '26, I forget.
'26. It has to be appropriated by '24, but it has to be spent by '26. The, so you're looking to spend, if he works 20 hours a week, you could spend $600 or more thousand for the guidance here, for 20 hours a week, part-time?
Yeah, I, at this point, I don't have a working knowledge of what the bid price was, so I, I'm not able to discuss what the cost might be.
You said it was $148.06.
I said?
Yes, sir. You didn't know whether it was hourly or?
Well, I, and I still don't know. I mean, I'm not able to discuss that.
Purchasing, okay. All right, well.
I don't believe I said anything about that.
It's in the bid. Okay. We don't have, I looked at the program planning department, and in there, you, you have a budget of $90,000 for four people. Does that include the actual bid writer for the town?
I believe it includes that position.
So that's an actual full-time position?
It's almost full-time. I think it's 32 or 33 hours a week.
All just for bidding and getting grants, as a grant writer?
Merely grant writer, yes.
Do you have any idea what you pay this person?
Not offhand.
Because the whole budget for that department's only $90,000. And you're looking to pay this gentleman 20 hours a week, $150,000 for 50 weeks, if that's the amount at hours. I mean, it could be less, 15 hours would bring you down to $100,000 a week.
Well, they're, they're entirely different job requirements.
No. What, what, I don't know how you can say that. It's a grant writer. Grants a grant.
Well, we're not writing a grant. We're looking to meet Treasury, United States Treasury Department requirements regarding record-keeping and the justification for spending money.
It's a grant.
Well, you look at it your way, I look at it my way. I don't think it's the same at all. This is the implementation of the
Grant.
The requirements of a grant, which is not writing a grant.
Okay, so it's the implementation of a grant. But a grant writer should be able to handle the implementation, because as, as a grant writer, you get, if it's a, it's a government grant, you're gonna get a really set criteria of steps that you have to follow. They're gonna tell you, you gotta check this box, this box, this box, and this box. And if you don't follow every box, you're in default.
And I think you need to have some accounting experience and knowledge.
No question about it. And that's where, that's why this, our grant writer doesn't? I don't know who the person is.
No.
Wouldn't it be time to hire a grant writer?
I don't believe right now, no.
Why not? I mean, this is.
We're hiring the expertise we need through the bid. And we, we believe that we will receive the expertise we need, that that consultant will be closely advising our finance department, and we will be looking to keep records in an accurate and timely manner that will avoid having problems with the Treasury Department.
Because we're one of the few towns that looks, is hiring somebody. Most towns are not.
I have no idea what other towns are doing.
I, I gather not. So you're still on the path that you're going to just do the small businesses and nothing else, no infrastructure for the town?
I, I never said that.
What's your first criteria?
The first criteria is individuals, households, small business, nonprofits, and the tourism industry. So those are individually mentioned as subjects under the ARPA. And that's the first category that's mentioned in the materials that the U.S. Treasury Department has made available. So that, that category, that's the primary purpose for the ARPA, was to assist people, businesses, et cetera, that were adversely impacted economically by the COVID-19 pandemic.
You know, the community as a whole's been impacted too. And I'm not saying you don't help out small businesses, but the, the whole community's been affected as a whole. And doing some of the things that the ARPA allows you to do would help the greater community of Wallingford two ways. It'll open up more potential recreation facilities, infrastructure through technology, water, whatever you want to do with that, parks, community pool, those types of things. And it, in the same instance, in the same breath, that would potentially keep our taxes at a steadier rate, because you can use some of this money on things that you would take out of our tax dollars every year to maintain. You can enhance those projects now with this ARPA money for the betterment of the whole community, not just a few.
So let me ask you a question.
Yes.
Is it more important to deal with what might be spikes, or dips, or whatever in the tax rate? Or is it more important to deal with the economics, the, the losses, the extreme, in many cases, economic dire results of the COVID-19? I believe the U.S. Treasury was looking at those as the primary reasons for the Rescue Plan Act.
Well, most communities.
So I tend to feel that the assistance to those, those individual areas of concern is of primary importance. And when we are able to address those, and with funds that are remaining, certainly, all of, all of the other purposes can be before us, and appropriate funds. But I would hate to run out of funds, because we put in a water main, and we didn't have funds to assist household or small business, nonprofit, whatever, that is in serious financial condition.
You asked me a question.
Mr. Gross, if I could just interrupt you for a moment, because we're approaching half the time we have allotted for public question and answer. I just want to see if...
Can I just answer his question? He asked me a question. He said, I have a question.
You have 30 seconds.
No, that's enough time, but I'll continue. So you asked if that was, and I would disagree. For one is, you've been sitting on this money for months. Other communities have already spent this money. If, if it's direly needed by some of these businesses, you should be spending on these businesses now. Waiting six months, they're gonna get over the hump, and they're gonna be on the way to recovery, as many businesses are. I'm not saying all. There are other things that the town, that the state and the feds have done. They've offered tremendous amounts of money to businesses, and I would hope that many of these businesses have applied for these grants and in, or loans that were available. And so you're gonna have to look to see what these businesses and households received.
That's true. There certainly will have to be disclosure of any other assistance received. However, whether or not they now are recovered, that doesn't cover a loss that was not, not recovered through some other grant. They are still eligible to receive funds to recover from what they lost in 2020. So they may be whole now, as far as, and now a, a whole revenue stream, but that has not recovered their loss.
So I'll ask you one question, and I'll finish. So if you're saying that if a business grow, had a profit in 2019 of $100,000, 2020 had a profit of $80,000, they're short $20,000, 2021, they have a profit of $120,000. They were short that $20,000. They were short that twenty thousand that in twenty twenty. You're saying that the town should make up that twenty thousand dollar profit shortfall that year?
I'm saying that that is what I believe ARPA is indicating can be applied for, and they could be a recipient if they meet all of the requirements.
But you're setting those requirements.
I, I'm saying, my belief is that is what it states. Now, that's why we're hiring consultants to make sure that what we're going to do will meet all of the requirements so that at the point there is an audit, the town won't owe money back.
I'll yield this.
Anybody else have any general comments for public question and answer? Come on up.
Good evening. Mike Lynn, twenty-nine Palmeroy Avenue. I'm here as the President of Wallingford Center, Inc. I would like to stay, unfortunately, I can't stay for the rest of the meeting, so I'd just like to make some comments to item number nine. If you form a committee for the ARPA funds, we, WCI would ask that we're part of any committee. The reason being is about three months ago, Tim Ryan came to one of our meetings, and it was a merchant meeting of which we had over thirty merchants, property owners, business owners in the center come to, come to us with interest of what is out there for assistance. And kind of some of the stories we were hearing were individuals that have businesses, they are struggling to keep the doors open, or we had property owners here who were saying, listen, I want to put investment into my property, however, because my apartments on the second floor are not paying me rent, or I have a vacant commercial space, I can't do the investment I want to my property, therefore, I'm making payments to the bank that I otherwise was receiving from my tenants. The other thing I'd ask the council to look at is CCM has a toolkit that's out, the Conference, the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities talks about the approach of your ARPA funds, and they're suggesting to be transparent, open to forming a stakeholders group. They, they say getting groups such as yourself, the legislative body for the community, chambers of commerce, EDCs, WCI, or other economic development commissions, local nonprofits, local tourism. It just, it's something that is, and I agree, this is, Bill can mark his calendar, this is one of the rarities, I will agree with Bill on some of the importance here of, the small businesses are really hurting. And I'm telling you this because we're hearing it, because we now, after that initial meeting when we had all those business owners, property owners come to our merchant meeting, they're coming every week, every month when we have our merchant meetings, and saying, is there any update from the town on the ARPA funds? So time is of the essence, I agree, but also, this is a double, so really mark your calendars. The mayor is correct. We can't rush into this and start spending money like drunken sailors because if we do, if the feds audit us down the road, we owe every single penny back to the feds that we dole out. The other thing I would ask you to look at is the town of East Windsor recently put out their ARPA funds. Now, they, they only received about a million dollars versus our allotment, and what they did was they, they did a, a grant program for businesses that could demonstrate need, gave a grant of up to ten thousand dollars per business that applied. Ten thousand dollars doesn't seem like a lot of money, but I want to give an example. The tenant space that we're Red School, Red Scroll Records was formerly located on, next to Healing Hands on Route Five, that's a thousand dollars a, a month rent. You give someone ten thousand dollars, you basically paid their rent for the portion of, of a year, ten months, but it's a good plot. That means they, they don't have to worry about the other bills that are piling up because I also want to remember, remind you that, and this is from my vice president, you know, supply costs have gone up between thirty and thirty-five percent on some of these businesses. The other thing is these businesses during COVID have been hit with minimum wage increases of up to three dollars, with another one coming. So you add all these little things in, and then you throw in just the other economic factors associated with COVID, the businesses are really taking a hit. And the vitality of our community is, it really, it, it hinges on the success of some of our small businesses, especially in our center. So I, I would ask that you, you consider if any board, commission, however, subcommittee, work group is formed, that we have a seat at the table to make sure that some of our business owners are connected to this money, if, when it goes out. And lastly, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't do this, I'll do the shameless plug because I know everyone's calendars are marked for December third for the holiday stroll. Four to nine, come, shop, dine, and win. Look forward to seeing everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public question and answer? Ma'am. You name an address for the record, please.
Mr. Chair, Virginia Mae, seventy-six Tankwood Road. I would like to start with congratulating every, all the councillors on the reelection. And for those two of you who didn't run, Councilor Chertel, Councilor Zandry, on behalf of my family, I would just like to thank you for your service to this community, and I know your contribution will be missed. Thank you again. And my question pertains to the order of the meeting. I have questions about point eight on the agenda. I think majority of them probably will be answered during the council's discussion that is forthcoming, but in case they're not, and in order not to waste anybody's time now, will I have an opportunity to ask those after the discussion of point eight?
Uh, that is my intention.
Thank you very much. No further.
Thank you. Anyone else? There being none, I close the public question and answer period, move on to item six, which is discussion and possible action regarding the agreement of the Wallingford Board of Education and the Educational Administrators Association of Wallingford, twenty-two through twenty-five. Good evening. If you could just remind us who you are for the record, please.
Of course. Good evening, everyone. My name is Fran Thompson. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Personnel for the Wallingford Public Schools.
Good evening. I'm Tammy Raccio, Vice Chair for the Board of Ed. Mrs. Leveque and Mrs. Bellisi both had family commitments tonight, so you're stuck with me.
Your words.
So thank you for the opportunity to present for your consideration, just the information regarding the administrators' contract for the Wallingford Administrators and the Board of Education, which was recently completed, the negotiations. It's a three-year contract that will run from July twenty twenty-two through June twenty twenty-five. Over the three years, each year, there's a, agreed upon one point nine nine percent general wage increase plus a step increase for the twenty-nine-member unit, most of which are at the top step already and will be by the third and final year of the contract. The annuity with regards to their, their increase by, it will be one thousand dollars the first year and five hundred dollars the subsequent years. So in twenty twenty-three, it would be a two thousand dollar annuity, and in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, both will be twenty-five hundred dollar annuity. The deductible plan, the insurance cost share is going to be twenty-three percent the first two years and twenty-three point five percent the third year. And the annual HSA contribution will be one thousand dollars for the individuals and two thousand dollars for family. The insurance waiver of coverage is, continues to be available, but if any employee who was receiving the waiver as of twenty nineteen leaves the insurance program, they're not eligible to return to the, receiving the waiver. So that was part of the conversation we had. And also, finally, we have established a fund for those administrators wishing to go back to further their education. The fund will be fifty-four hundred dollars for the purpose of reimbursing administrators for the cost of the college or university courses they take. That is one pool of money, not per administrator. And we will also give a doctoral stipend of a thousand dollars for anybody who receives their doctorate. And currently, there is one administrator who's just began that process. No other administrator in this union has their doctorate. And finally, the vacation allotment for administrators who are new to the union, to the district, they will be able to earn vacation at the rate of two and a half days per month of employment to be expended during that year. That's, that's a change from having to wait an entire year in the job. And one final point, there is a, just a revision to the, the, the contract draft that you have, the Pupil Personnel Services Director, that position no longer is part of the union, so that will be strict and from, from the final signed agreement. And that's, that's our summary. Do you have any questions? Is there anything we can answer for you?
Questions from the council? There appear to be none. Questions from the public? There appear to be none, so you guys skate. So, and without action from the council, this will go into effect at some point soon, won't it?
Thank you all. Have a very happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Same to you. All right, on to item seven, which is an update from the Police Station Steering Committee. We do have members here, the chairman.
Good evening. For the record, Allison Kapaschinsky, Town Engineer, here tonight as the Chair of the Wallingford Police Station Steering Committee.
Thank you.
I think I was asked to prepare a quick update, so I have that, and then obviously any questions or anything that I could answer for you all tonight.
Please go ahead.
Great. So the committee itself is made up of myself, Chairman Sivoni, Retired Police Chief Bill Wright, who's here tonight, Retired Fire Chief Rich Hydegard, Public Works Director Rob Ultraitis, and Wallingford resident and retired professional engineer John Walworth. Chief Ventura or another police department representative attends all meetings, always welcome their input and anything that they could bring to the table. In August, the town purchased One Hundred Barnes Road, which I believe you're all aware of, for the site of the new police station. The building was previously occupied by 3M, so it was an office building. It's mostly a wide-open floor plan with a row of offices along the west side. We do plan to renovate the entire building to best suit the department's needs. One of the objectives is to deliver a building that will allow the police department to achieve Tier Three and Kalia accreditation. The proposed design will include a Sallyport addition off the north side and two outbuildings, which are a storage garage and sign shop combo and an indoor firing range. On November tenth, the steering committee approved the recommendation to award the successful bidder, Jakunski Humes from Berlins, Connecticut, the RFP for Architectural and Engineering Design Services. They've completed studies and designs for about fifty police stations, police departments, I should say, in the state of Connecticut alone. They also do work in Vermont, Pennsylvania, Rhode Island, and Massachusetts, where they add another about forty police departments to their resume. Jakunski Humes has also done some work with the Wallingford Police Department, where they've completed space needs assessments and feasibility studies. Their recently constructed projects include the Stanford Police Headquarters and the North Haven Police Department next door. Currently, just where we are in the process, we just awarded, the purchasing department just rewarded the bid, and we're waiting for a contract signing, hopefully happening shortly after the holiday break, Thanksgiving to be clear, so hopefully the next week or two. The first task that we'll complete is a kickoff meeting with the police department and the architect, and we are going to be revisiting the conceptual floor layout that was included with the RFP. There have been a lot of programming changes in, in needs and requirements by the police department, so we want to make sure that we're getting off on, on the right foot and making sure that we're all on the same page. And besides that, we're also working on the bid for Construction Manager. That's currently being reviewed by town departments purchasing, I got risk comments today, and the final review will be with the Law Department. We're hoping to get that out mid-December for a tentative bid opening mid-January. And that's the update I have prepared.
Thank you. This was Councilor Marone's request, so he gets to go first.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So will there be a building committee, like a, like a public building committee that we've had for other building projects when it comes time for construction?
Uh, yes, I believe the mayor's intention is for this to be the same steering committee and building committee.
I, I expected probably this committee hiring the architect would be the ones to be the building committee.
Okay, because usually we, people are chosen from the, I shouldn't say usually, but in several committees that I was on, you know, with the Board of Education, it was always members of the, of the, the Board of Ed staff and then, you know, members of the public and so on.
I think, yeah, and, and we have members from the community as well on, on this committee. Generally, for, for general government projects, it's been staffed the way we've staffed this one. You're right, when we have school construction and everything, there, there often or usually is a building committee that's appointed from a variety of entities. Well, usually it's the council, mayor, et cetera, but for, for our, most of our general government projects, a number of them have just been, Public Works was in charge of a number of them. The Fire Department was, that was, I believe, headed by the Fire Chief, if I recall correctly, and, and a few other Public Works, et cetera. So the Police Department, I looked at the same way.
Okay, because in terms of scale, though, this project will be substantially more money than the Fire Department project, correct?
It will be more. I don't remember offhand.
Yeah, no, I'm not trying to pin it to a dollar amount. Okay. So, and when would the next time that this would come? So, so the next step is your, I appreciate your report. Thank you very much. So you, you need to finalize the?
CM bid.
Right, okay. And then after that, does this come back to the council at some point when we have plans?
I mean, I, I could say that I'm happy to come in and report whenever you would like an update as far as required.
I think, I think in general, at the point it's been designed, and especially at the point that design goes out to bid, then obviously money would have to be appropriated, but in the course of design, updates on where it stands, et cetera, I mean, that's, that would be part and parcel of, of what Allison is doing tonight. But I, especially as soon as additional money, I mean, we, we will. We hired the architect?
Yeah, we have appropriated them, or, yeah, they have a PO.
So, I mean, we've approved the funding for that. So at this point, the architect will begin the work. I'm told it would be about a year to do a complete design. So during that year, certainly there can be updates, and then there would have to be a, an adoption of an, of an ordinance regarding funding, given the results of a public bid. The, the lowest responsible bidder would be chosen, and in order to award that bid would require money being appropriated.
Okay. You know, most oftentimes when we have projects, not projects of this nature, but like when I want to know what's going on with a certain, certain committee, we get the minutes from the meeting as a part of our normal, you know, normal discourse. So would it be possible to include the minutes from this meeting in our, in our regular council packet?
Yeah, absolutely. I do also just let, you know, post them online if you'd ever like to go there, but I'm happy to send them.
Oh, I wasn't aware that they were online.
Yes. Yep, agendas and minutes are posted there as soon as they're approved, the minutes.
Okay. All right, that's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilor Chertel?
All right, so this is going to come off worse than it is, but it's not directed at you. Are you on here as a private citizen?
No, I am sitting on the committee as the chairman of the council.
Did we ever author, did we ever as a council vote to, and I have full faith in you, and I'll vote for you right now, but I don't recall the council, like when I was on the pool committee, there had to be a vote.
So first of all, I was appointed by the mayor as the chairman of the council. Not, not the individual Vincent Sivoni, but the mayor decided that I, the chairman of the council would sit on the committee. Your liaison to the pool committee was created by the council.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so, but if the council wanted representation on the committee besides you, could the council appoint someone then else? I'm just.
The mayor, the mayor appointed the committee.
It's on our committee? Okay. I mean, I have faith, I, you're going to build a great station. I have all full faith. I have full faith in you. I just was like, I heard. station. I have all full faith. I have full faith in you. I just was like, I heard that, and I was like, when did we vote on that? I thought we voted on that. But it's fine. We're all good.
No, if someone else wants to serve on the committee, there's no problem with that.
You have, you have, no, you have, that's fine. I mean, unless Joe Marone wants to.
You're free, aren't you?
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for the update.
Sure you're all set? You have any other questions for me?
No, no, I'm good.
Any questions from the public? There appear to be none. Thank you very much for your time and your report.
Thank you.
I'll see you at the next meeting.
Sounds good.
All right, on to item eight. Counselor Marone's request for discussion and possible action regarding rescinding the host agreement with GOT Space.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I did see the memo from Attorney Small with regard to the, that we can't rescind, and I understand that this is a legally binding contract. So, the, I guess I'm not clear where this whole project stands. So, we had approved the host agreement as a council, and then there was a power agreement that was approved by the PUC that was on our agenda, and then it was pulled from our agenda. So, I was just wondering if you could give us some, some back, you know, and then we read some stuff in the, it was an article in the New London Day about some issues that the town of Basra was having with GOT Space. So, I was just wondering if perhaps we could get some backup on why the item was on the agenda or off, and what, if there's any other information that you could help us out with.
GOT Space has some internal issues going on within itself.
Okay, so they asked to have it pulled, or we pulled it out of concern?
I had become aware of the internal issues, and I felt I wanted to see them solve those issues before the town approved the power agreement. I didn't want to be involved in their internal issues.
Okay. Is it at all possible to elaborate on what the issues are?
It's a discussion between the parties involved.
Okay. So, because I noticed in the agreement, there's a section on events of default, and it says, there's some language along the lines of, if Wallingford doesn't perform a covenant or an agreement in a certain amount of time, they could send a written demand, and then we have 60 days to act, or something like that. Is there a situation in which we would be in default by not having made a, done anything with the power agreement?
Not at this point, no.
Because they're not pursuing it at this point?
There's a period of time of where, if there are not a power agreement in effect, then the host agreement becomes null and void.
Okay. And that, but that time period is something like 36 months?
It's a sizable period, yes.
So, do we know if they've applied for the, according to the agreement, they had to apply for a DEC/DE application or waiver? Do we know if that's happened?
I don't know whether it's happened.
Okay. So, what were to happen, say, if GOT Space dissolved as an entity? At some point, does the agreement, do we have to still wait the 36 months? So, what if, I was really in favor of this idea, and another potential developer wanted to develop the same area? Are we locked in with GOT Space for 36 months, or is there a point at which we can get away from this agreement?
An entity, an entity that is aligned and among the same people has all those lands tied up presently. The lands that GOT Space was interested in, they acquired the options in another entity, and those options are still in effect.
Okay, so that entity is separate from GOT Space, then?
Yes.
Okay, so they could potentially pursue another developer to develop this if GOT Space didn't work out?
Speaking with the economic director, Tim Ryan, we still expect something to happen on this, even if it's a third entity. There's too much that's been put together, and I'm told that some of the entities that had been interested in Wallingford, and we hope they're still interested, are very well-known national companies that are still interested in Wallingford.
Okay, so if another entity were to approach us, would we require another host agreement? Or could they, because the host agreement is with GOT Space, correct?
I don't think it precludes a second host agreement with another entity.
Okay.
I can't be sure of that, because I haven't looked at the issue, but I don't think the legislation precludes such, nor does our agreement with GOT Space preclude such. But I'd have to look at that separately.
So, the entity, you said they've optioned the land, so they don't own the land yet?
It's all under option.
Okay, so taxes are not being, or taxes are being paid by whoever the current landowner is?
Correct. There's been no change in ownership. It's still farmland. It's taxed as farmland.
Right, okay.
And so far as I know, it's still fully being used as farmland.
Okay. Okay, I think I'm all set for now, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I just kind of want to piggyback on some of Counselor Marone's questions, because I'm, I'm a little confused. So, one of, one of the questions I had got unanswered. So, it sounds like EDC, Tim Ryan and the folks believe that whatever's going on with GOT Space is going to be figured out on their side, and this is likely to move forward with them.
That is the expectation.
Okay, so, all right, so my question from that, then, is if this, if this body passed the agreement with GOT Space, how could a third entity just buy up that right? In other words, the five people up here voted to do this agreement based on the entity that came before us. That agreement's with them. If there is no longer a "them," how does it just transfer? Was there something in that covenant that said those rights move over? I would think they would have to come back again to whoever the new entity was.
I'd have to look at the agreement, but I don't think it precludes an assignment to another entity.
So, you're saying it could be assigned to another entity?
Most agreements are assignable to other entities, yes.
Well, I hope the five people that voted for that knew that, because I voted no, but I wasn't even aware that. I assumed this was going to be directly with the entity that was here, because if we don't know what the next entity's going to bring, what they're going to do, the entity that came forward, you know, they, they said, we're going to be sensitive to this, and we're going to try to do that, and we're going to do this, that, and the other thing. The next entity might not. They're just going to have this, this agreement assigned to them?
My understanding is a lot of things that were represented by GOT Space were included in the host agreement. It wasn't just oral representations that were not enforceable. They were added to the agreement.
Okay, that was, that's my only question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa?
Thank you. I just don't want, I don't want anyone to think that we can just change our mind on this right now. We can't. Not like we have great feelings about GOT Space or bad feelings about GOT Space. Right now, there's a legal agreement in place. So, it, you know, I've received several letters from very thoughtful, respectful, reasoned letters, but primarily they reiterate objections to the, to the plan in the first place, you know, that we've heard and they still try to be sensitive to. But they're also raised issues about the, the business entity that we signed a contract with. But that doesn't mean we can just say, we don't like what we've been hearing, we don't like what we've been seeing, so we need to get out of this, because you can't unless they do something to violate the terms of the contract. I'm actually glad we're having a discussion, because it raises, at least it lets everyone know, yeah, we're all aware of, of how these folks are looking out there. You know, they look like they may have some trouble. But the fact remains, as critical as a good number of people were of my positions on this, I focused my attention and my questions on being sure that there were conditions in this, as Mr. Farrell pointed out, conditions in this contract that allowed for us to hold them in default if they did any number of things wrong or did not follow through with any number of things. So, so far, they haven't done any of those. But if they prove to be unable to proceed, that's not going to be a big problem for us. They're just not going to be able to proceed. We can then decide to do nothing, or to do something else, or consider somebody else. I just, you know, how I feel about GOT Space today, I have concerns about them, whether they can do what they say they're going to do. But if they can't, they can't. We don't lose anything. They just can't do it. But we can't say we're backing out, because you're making us uncomfortable. We have a contract, and I think if we, if we tried to pursue that, we might open our, we would open ourselves up to legal action. And as a fiduciary body with fiduciary responsibilities we have, we'd be opening ourselves up to potentially multimillion-dollar lawsuits. So, there's an irony there. Let's say somebody, let's say this organization is not structured in such a way right now that they're going to be able to follow through with this on their own, as they exist. And while they're going through all this, whatever they're going through, we, we take an action that now, that cancels that contract with no, no legal basis written into the contract. We've now potentially given that entity the opportunity to make a lot of money on this, when they might have been folding. You would think about that, that you don't give them an opportunity to, to sue you for canceling their contract when they were already falling. It's like a gift. So, I just, we need to be careful about this, and I just don't want anyone, the public, thinking that, hey, you can, you can get out of this because of this, because of these people, and the way we've been, the things we've been reading. I just don't think people, I don't want people misled by that, that perception, because it's not a possibility, in my opinion, and I believe our legal department has explained that. So, I just think we should be careful about this, that's all. Now, if they, if we see that there's discussions of assignments and all these other things, well, everybody still has to adhere to the agreement we made. And if they violate any of those covenants, we have multiple means of recourse. So, while it's good to let everyone know we're aware that we have questions, our ability to take an action on it right now, I think is, well, does not exist, frankly.
Counselor Chortel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to piggyback exactly off of Counselor Testa's comments with a question. Whoever's up here, whenever the market-priced power supply agreement comes to the council, assuming it will come back to the council for approval at some point, if the council were to vote that down, that would kill the whole thing. Or would it just send it, or would it just send it?
Yeah, no, it would.
It would. So, here's my question. If the, does the council, precisely to Counselor Testa's point, whoever's up here when that comes back, does the council have the ability, all right, let me just, I'm going to use my hypothetical, because I voted no on this. I have concerns about the noise, and I have concerns about the speed with which it came before the council in the spring. Those are my two issues. So, if it came before me, I would vote no. If four other people voted no for whatever reason, but it, but like my reason of voting no wouldn't be because I didn't like the agreement. You know, my reason would have nothing to do with the power supply agreement. It would just be, I don't like the project. I'm going to kill it. Does that open the council up to legal action? Does the, I know, like, planning and zoning has to vote based on how it complies with the regulations. Planning and zoning can't just vote against stuff if they don't like it. Is the council in a position like that, whenever the council gets to vote on this power supply, or the council can just vote no and, you know?
You know, whenever a counselor votes no, he doesn't have to, he or she doesn't have to say why.
Right.
You know, it probably would be a good idea, if your whole idea was you just wanted to kill it, just vote against it, period.
Right. Would the council be legally?
You know, going the other way, you know, you're here as fiduciaries. If you want to vote against something, I don't think it opens up a lawsuit to the town, because you chose to kill it through voting against the power agreement.
You don't think it does?
I don't think it does, no. And the same thing on planning and zoning. I mean, if they choose not to add data centers to being a permissible use within that zone, just because they don't want data centers, that doesn't open up the town either. But, you know, everybody has to check the right boxes.
Right. Well, yeah, because I played through this, and I was, you know, when this was going to come before, because I was struggling with this, because I was actually thinking, I wouldn't, I wasn't sure how to vote, because I was thinking, what if the PUC says, oh, what do you want to change in the agreement? We'll go back and rewrite it to your, you know, to make the council happy. That's what I, that was going through my head. That's why I was wondering if the council, but, anyway, Mayor?
Just, just to refine it a little bit, the planning and zoning action is an amendment of their regulations, which is a purely legislative, really discretionary act. If, if this were an issue over an entity meeting an existing regulation, and they refused and didn't really give reasons, then, then it would be a different answer, right? Is that correct?
Oh, absolutely.
So, just, you have to distinguish, when they're functioning in a legislative discretionary purpose, it's, it's a different standard.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That makes sense. Thank you for both. That helps. Thanks a lot. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, can I add that down in, I think it was Basra, the, the application to add data centers as a permissible use, that was an application by, I think the entity was still GOT Space. The only reason it was denied was GOT Space didn't show up to pursue its own application. So, it was denied without prejudice. That's my understanding. Attorney Small talked to the people down there and asked why it was denied.
Thank you. Counselor Tada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Farrell, I just, I just wanted clarification on something. I think I heard you say to Counselor Zandry. So, the host agreement was between GOT Space and the town of Wallingford, correct? I mean, those were the two named entities in the...
Yes, that's true.
Okay. So, did you say that that's transferable, though, if GOT Space?
I haven't looked at the issue on whether it's assignable or not, but, you know, almost every contract is assignable. Most contracts say that the non-assigning party can object, but it has to have a reasonable, a reason for it. You can't deny consent to an assignment without a good reason.
Okay, so if, so if things with GOT Space did fall through, but then another company came and said, hey, we, we talked to the landowners, and we're going to purchase this, and we want to go in on this host agreement?
They'd have to get an assignment from GOT Space. The agreement's not just out in the wind for anybody to pick up. It's GOT Space's agreement.
Okay.
They would have to enter into, probably some, some money gets exchanged and it gets assigned, but it probably requires our, our approval.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. So, that would come before the council again at that point?
Right.
If that were to happen?
But, you know, GOT Space itself was really just an entity created for this. It wasn't something that we, we judged them to be creditworthy, and we liked the people involved. It, it was an idea that we knew other people would be brought in. It wasn't just GOT Space we were going to deal with. In the end, we would probably be dealing with known entities that would occupy these buildings.
Right, and I, yes, I do recall that. I just wanted to make sure that in the event that does happen, that we would see that again.
As Counselor Chortel brought up, the, the power agreement has to be approved by this council.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I guess to Counselor Testa's point, I wholly understand that we can't just walk away from a legal contract, right? But when they, when they presented this to us initially, it was a big sales pitch, and the, and the rush was on to get this passed, you know, with a, with a speed with which the council never approaches any issue. So, then some of us had concerns. Obviously, the majority of the council didn't, right? So, it passed. But now, we're sort of in a situation where this is exactly the kind of thing, thank you, this is exactly the kind of thing we were trying to avoid, or some folks were trying to avoid in the beginning. So, I mean, if you were a proponent of the data center concept in the beginning, then, you know, now it's sort of in limbo. So, you really haven't served the, your yes vote at the beginning didn't really pay off in the, in the end. So, I guess the only reason we get a bite at this apple at all is because of the huge tax break, you know, that we would give this, this company to build this type of facility. So, it's, I don't even know what my point is, quite frankly, other than the, other than, I feel like we're, you know, so we had a, we... I feel like we're, you know, so we had a, we approached this in a way that we never approached anything, right? With a certain speed and with a certain, what I would describe as recklessness to get this through. And now it's through and now we have all these unresolved questions. So I got, you know, the administration, I asked them point blank, is this a good idea and why do you think so? And I actually thought they gave me a pretty good answer as to why they supported this idea. In terms of the council, I'm not clear why the council supported this, quite frankly. I, I mean, I get that there's potentially a payoff at the end. So if, you know, and I'm not pointing the finger at anyone here, Counselor Testa, but you made the point about the contract. Now we're in it and we're kind of, now we're, now we're kind of stuck. So I guess those are my thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, might I add that the state legislature passed it, I think even with less delay than we passed our agreement, they passed it within a couple of weeks of it being proposed.
Fundamental of good legislation, right? Fast and dirty.
Counselor, Counselor Zandry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor Marone, it might have been before your time, but there was one other thing that, that we did with, with speed, and that was the removal of the trees downtown. Ten-day posting, on the 11th day, they all came down. That's the only other thing that I saw come that quickly. But certain things do move very quickly. Certain things that want to be done right away. I, I do want to come back to some of this discussion, because there's a lot of people here tonight that are, that are here because of this agreement. So what I'm hearing is that, that when the power agreement comes back to the council, the council could legally, legally decline it and not necessarily define what for. If, if it goes back to the PUC and they say, well, what would you like us to tweak? The sitting counselors don't necessarily have to define that. They can just say, I don't like the agreement, I don't like this, I don't like that, or they don't have to say anything at all. They can continue to vote no on that and they wouldn't be in, in putting the original vote to peril, that they could just, that would kill it, right there. That would be one thing. Now, what I just heard is that if this gets assigned to somebody else, it would have to come back to the council as well. Is that true?
No, I didn't say that.
All right. I, I, because I'm trying to, to make sure that I'm clear on this. So that causes me concern, too. Here's why. We have a company that, and I don't know what all the details are, but they sound like they're having some financial difficulties putting together what they need to do.
I didn't say it was financial.
No, I, I did some investigation and what I've been reading is that they've got some, they've got some struggles pulling some of their financing together. So, and this is all, this is all what's been in the news cycle. So my concern becomes, they're sitting on something very valuable now, if they can transfer this with a money exchange. Now, that causes me some concern up here, because that means basically this body granted them permission to, you know, in good faith. The five people that voted yes on this, which, you know, again, they, you know, they wanted this for the town, they wanted this for this, that, and the other thing, but now we've just given something that's, it's a, it's a transferable item, which again, I'm not sure everybody was aware of that. And it's got, it's got a, a capital piece to it. If they can't, if GodSpace can't do it and somebody else can do it, that's worth money. So they could pivot that off to another organization, they could walk away, or they could be a sub-partner, some other entity that, that maybe wouldn't have gotten in here in the first place, now gets the benefit of just being able to buy it up. I, I would hope that this does come back here. Otherwise, I would have some concerns with what the process actually is. I, I guess that's, I guess that's it, because I, I really think that moving forward, that, you know, we've got other opportunities. Oh, I know what else I wanted to ask. The legislative piece that you mentioned on, on the planning and zoning side, why is it legislative? My understanding is, we're looking at a zone right now that doesn't allow for data centers and they would have to make a change to that. Is that the legislative piece that you're talking about?
Well, it's, it's when they function with discretion that is open to a legislative function, so they can decide whether, whether subdivisions require, I'm trying to think of a good example. The town doesn't want any subdivisions. So take that out of planning and zoning regulations, that would be a legislative function. But once they adopt regulations that allow subdivisions, then you have to have 50-foot right-of-ways for public streets. And at that point, if someone wants to have less than 50 feet, then, then there has to be a waiver, otherwise the entity has to meet all of the regulations as they're proposed. But whether or not a subdivision is in the regulations is no longer executing or imposing a given standard, it's saying whether or not a particular use can be in, in the zoning regulations. So with, with the data centers, you can decide, well, we don't want any data centers in the town, for whatever reason. And at that point, it's not an accepted use. However, once you allow the data center in, then it must meet all of the requirements that the regulations require for the data center. And now there's rights in any party to decide, well, I'll meet all those regulations and now you can't refuse it. So at the point there's regulations, then that is the direction planning and zoning has chosen, and the question is meeting those regulations. But you can, as I said, not allow a given land use, and that's, that's a legislative discretionary act. I don't think that's really subject to much judicial review, right?
Correct. Yeah. Of when, like, the Amazon storage center out where Bristol Myers was, when it was denied, I, I forget whether it was James Seiter or James Fitzsimmons said, but they checked all the boxes. You know, if it's a permitted use and they hit all the boxes, then discretion is not really there. You're supposed to grant something that meets all the criteria that's already been set.
That's, and that's actually where I was going to go with my next question, because here we've got a scenario over there with Amazon, where they checked off all the boxes and we told them no, but it's a, it's a permitted use today, like you've just described. And that's why we've got one problem over there. Now we've got a situation where we've got a zone set up that doesn't currently allow for this, and they're looking to make this change. And so, again, going back to the speed of, of everything that's being done, I think we need to take some more time. Here we've got one, you know, I, I know it's two different topics, but we've got an entity that matched all the requirements and they were told no. They're going to sue the town. Now we've got this other entity that, that wants us to make a zoning change, it's not permitted today, anywhere. Forget the fact that they're farms, all that zone over there, it's not permitted today. And we're like bum rushing that change. So that's, that's another piece of this puzzle. You know, let's change the zoning, let's get a power agreement, let's all do it in the next 45 days, because we're in a rush. We're making mistakes on stuff that, that is set in the agreements today, the zones
Counselor, I think the, the initial, the initial presentation to add data centers was actually on a June planning and zoning agenda and it came off for more studies. So it's been sitting out there since June, even before we even heard from GodSpace.
And I, and I, and I appreciate that, but that goes back to the original discussion we had here, that it really maybe should have gone to them first. But I, I don't want to debate it, because I, I understand the mechanics and, and the legality aspects. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was the last of my questions.
Counselor Testa?
All right. I don't see any hands up here, members of the public. You were first before.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eugenia May, still at 76 Tenquid Road.
Yeah, thank you.
As I made my booking early. So Attorney Small was very clear, it was a very clear letter explaining what doesn't represent default by GodSpace and why the agreement cannot be pulled out from, and we understand that, Counselor Testa, of course, that was a very clear legal opinion. Now, my question is about what does represent default by GodSpace. So the first thing that comes across in the agreement is the preliminary fee payment. Preliminary fee payments, and Attorney Farrell, correct me if I'm wrong, would be triggered by two events. First is the application for the tax-exempt status with the Connecticut Commissioner. Once that is granted, and actually per point eight B for I's, GodSpace is supposed to give Wallingford a notice. That's first condition. And second is the adoption of the agreement with the utility, with the Wallingford Electric Division. After those two, the payments should start flowing in. Do we know the status of their application for the tax-exempt status?
They haven't acquired the properties yet, so they have no authority to apply for any tax exemption on real estate they don't own.
Okay. Will they, are they under obligation in the agreement to notify town once those purchases come through?
Actually, the purchase, once it's completed, is filed on the, at the town clerk's office. So, you know, it, in fact, it's, if it's not notice itself, as you're probably aware, it appears in the, the paper on the transfers.
Understood. Are there any deadlines to be met by GodSpace, such as their 36 months for applying for the first building permit? Are there any deadlines that apply to their land purchase transaction? Or are there not?
No, I understand that they have dates in their options, but I'm not privy to what those dates are.
So town of Wallingford is not, is not interested in them doing that in a timely manner? That was not something that town thought would be in its interest to specify?
There, there are deadlines in, in the contract. It's just, they're, they're not, we're not at those deadlines.
For the land purchase? Or, I only saw two deadlines. The one, and I might be missing something. The one deadline was for applying for the first building permit, which would be three years, and the second achieving the minimum investment of 200 million five years from now, from effective date of the agreement, which is July 1st. Now, in terms of the finalizing of the land purchase application with the state, I didn't see any deadlines there. I just want to clarify whether town thought that it's not in town's interest to put any deadlines on GodSpace in this regard.
You know, my understanding is you, you can only apply for a building permit on property that you own. I could be incorrect on that, I don't do zoning laws.
I understand. My question is rather, are there any deadlines for GodSpace to finalize their land purchase and apply for tax-exempt status with the state? Because I would think, because preliminary fee payment is conditioned on that status, it would be in interest of the town of Wallingford and all of the taxpayers of the town of Wallingford to have a deadline on that.
The only deadlines are those set forth in the host agreement.
I'm just wondering whether I'm missing something. So it's just building permit and investment amount?
Ma'am, can I just ask you to pause for a moment? Can I just get a show of hands how many people want to speak tonight? Okay. You, you can go ahead, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm being so, I just can't figure out, is the answer no or yes, Attorney Farrell? Are there deadlines or there are not? It's a discretion of GodSpace.
The only deadlines are those set forth in the host agreement.
Thank you. Another question. Is there a default, is a cross-default clause in the agreement? Default, cross-default meaning standard thing, if, should GodSpace default on any other agreement which is of material impact to the host agreement? It will automatically trigger GodSpace default on this agreement, or at least trigger a notification by GodSpace to the town of Wallingford and give town of Wallingford a discretion to declare them in default?
They would have to be in a default of an agreement with the town of Wallingford for us to treat it as a default. The fact that they default in some agreement with a third party would not be grounds for us to claim they're in default of our contract.
Okay, so no cross-default. So in a hypothetical situation, that GodSpace defaults on, for example, their land purchase agreement with the farmers, and no longer has that land under contract, which is a material impact to the host agreement, because that land is actually specifically on the addendum. Town of Wallingford would not know that, would not want to know about that, and does not have any further inquiry about that. Just if it fell apart and there is no deadline on the land purchase by them, they can basically be in the limbo for three years and all of us can be in the limbo for three years.
The town of Wallingford, through inquiries, but nothing official, believes it's aware of the properties involved, but the, the, the properties are not named in the contract. So, you know, if they choose not to exercise an option or not to renew the option, it, it doesn't cause our contract with them to be null and void or in default.
Well, I thought that the contract specifically has those lots listed as addendum A, and I think the first article actually of the contract, sorry, bear with me here for a second, I think it references those properties, actually. Give me a minute. Whereas GodSpace intends to develop and service the owner, as said term is defined in the legislation, of one or more qualified data centers within Wallingford on the following parcels of real property as C attached Schedule A. This is the first page of the agreement. So I would think that land is specifically connected to the agreement.
I, I didn't bring the contract with me, but, you know, whatever the contract says, it's not in default at this point. I did check, the options are still in effect. There's nothing that the town can declare null and void or them in default. You know, and in fact, Counselor Testa, in, in my opinion, is right, any action to declare it in default could in fact expose the town to a lawsuit.
I understand that, of course, as it stands. It's just unfortunate, I think, that this agreement at the time of the adoption did not have a standard cross-default article. That would be protective of the town and not, like, at this point, it seems like we're really limited for three, by three years' terms. We can't be in a limbo for three years, preventing anybody else to come, I guess. But thank you. I just wanted clarification on that.
Ma'am, could I? So we have, our rules allow 20 minutes for public comment for this item, and I know there's two other people who want to speak. So I just want you to keep that in mind, and you're at nine minutes.
Okay. Very fast.
And it's typically three minutes per person.
Thank you, Chair Sirvany, for your understanding. My last question is about successorship and assignment, actually. If we could clarify to the best of our capabilities. So there is an Article 14 in the agreement that specifically called successors and assigns, which reads, "This agreement shall inure to the benefit of and bind the respective successors and permitted assigns of the parties. Without limitation of the general, generality of the preceding sentence, the provisions of this agreement shall, during the term thereof, bind any owner, operator, collocation tenant, or subsequent owner, operator, collocation tenor, and all affiliates of each of them of the qualified data centers." So the any, oh, the only successors and assignees, I guess, is that the right word? That are listed here are owners, operators, collocation tenants, that were supposed to be working in partnership with GodSpace. Nobody else is specified as a permitted assign, so, and it sounded like you, I might have misunderstood, but it sounded like you indicated that this agreement can be assigned at any time to any interested party who is not an operator.
What, what I had said was- What, what I had said was that most contracts are assignable. And again, I didn't bring the contract tonight because the opinion of the Law Department is this contract cannot, at this meeting, by this body, at this time, be declared null and void. It's a binding contract. This council should not take action and cannot take action to declare it null and void. That, that is very definite. That's the opinion of the Law Department. It's Attorney Small's opinion, and it's my opinion as well. So whether, whether it can be assigned or not is not an issue before this body tonight. The issue is whether this body can declare the contract as it exists to be null and void. And the opinion of the Law Department is it cannot. It does not have that authority. So I did not review the contract as to what it says here, there, and otherwise. The opinion is that it's a binding contract right now and cannot be declared null and void.
And thank you. I think we all understand that by now. I think because the issue of just the different parties springing up and taking the assignment of a contract was mentioned, that I guess.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I was generalizing on that because most contracts are assignable, but I didn't review the contract because we, the Law Department had reached the opinion there was no way this body tonight could take a vote that would be binding, that would declare it to be null and void.
Understood. Very quick question, the last one. Hypothetically, your legal opinion, what happens? Should, we don't know, because Town of Wallingford is not going to be notified about that. But should GOT Space default on their purchase agreement with the farmers? And within three months from now, the farmers enter into another contract with somebody else and sell it to somebody else who wants to develop that land for other purposes? And Town of Wallingford still has a host agreement that lists those same purposes for the, I'm sorry, those same properties for the purposes of data centers and host agreement? How is that going to be resolved? What's the path of action?
I don't have an opinion on that at this point.
And I'm looking up to you, Attorney Farrell, to get all the answers to, to the questions that keep me sleepless at night. But I guess those are a step.
I wish I could answer your question for you, but I don't have an opinion.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Chair Sir Voney, for being so patient.
Next. Ma'am in the yellow shirt, mustard shirt. Name an address for the record, please.
Cathy Palmer, eighteen Tankwood Road, Wallingford. I don't really have any questions. I just have some general comments, a lot of which has already been stated. I don't think any of us should be surprised that there's a problem with GOT Space right now. It took me about twenty minutes to figure out who's who, what's what, between the State of Connecticut judicial website and Google to figure out that this is a brand new company, got some issues, and we're rushing this project that has such a huge economic impact on our town and personally in my neighborhood. GOT Space made its appearance before the June planning and zoning meeting, so we knew about them before that. And I feel like putting this plan in place and approving it put a giant target on my neighborhood, our neighborhood. And now if GOT Space exits this deal, somebody else is just going to jump right in. And here it is. That's my comment, and I'm, I'm, I feel underserved. I really do. I really think that the pause button should have been before the deal. Take a minute, take an extra month, do a little diligence. Now here we are. We're kind of stuck with this for thirty-six months, two years, five years? We don't know. No real answers. There were no real answers from this company at that Legislative Council meeting, which is what we all said, hey, let's just take a step back and get some more concrete answers. This is going to be in my front door every day, until it happens or not happens. So I don't have any questions. That's how I feel.
I'm Ronnie Maturro, one zero zero nine North Farms Road in Wallingford. I have a real bad issue here. And the issue is, where I live, I, I have an acre of land, and behind me, they want to build. Well, they're going to build behind me, they want to build alongside of me, and they want to put a road on the other side. So I'm going to have a little island. No privacy. People behind me could see in my backyard, people on the side of me could see in my backyard, and people on the other side could see because they're going to put a road in. And I'm between Mike and Jessica, my neighbors, okay? I have woods being there now. Well, there won't be no woods there no more because I measured, and I went down to town, and I got a zoning map, and I got a map of the area. And guess what? They have fifty feet of space for a road. Santa Croch and Martin is selling that land. I got in a big argument with him about this, and he don't care. He was a friend of mine. Well, he's not a friend no more, okay? Alls he's looking at is dollar signs. And he says his father owns the land. His father lives in Florida. Why does he care? But you know what? I care. I moved to Wallingford because of the farms. Well, all the farms are disappearing. So would Wallingford like to give me a million dollars for my house so I could disappear? I don't think this is fair. This is not right, and you guys better check into this. Because someone in this town, and someone, a lot of people in this town that's in the powers to be in the government, do not do their homework. Do your homework. Thank you.
Anyone else? I saw the hand in the back row first.
Hi. Sorry, I'm short. Kelly Watrous, one eighty-three Pinehurst Drive.
You might want to bring that mic closer.
Sorry. Kelly Watrous, one eighty-three Pinehurst Drive. Lifelong Wallingford resident, teacher in town for the last twenty years. I just have a quick comment, and I, I want to say this as politely as possible, but I don't think that due diligence was done when this came up originally. And I'm hoping that in the future, due diligence is done. This needs to be looked into further. But my question is, why isn't this going, or why didn't this, or in the future, why doesn't it go to planning and zoning before it comes here? Especially seeing as it's not zoned for this right now.
I'm not sure if the Law Department has an answer.
I would, my opinion is it could go either direction first. The parties involved weren't interested in taking an application to planning and zoning and seeking the, the location if the Town wasn't interested in hosting the facility. So it's kind of a chicken and an egg issue. If there isn't a willingness to enter an agreement, then I don't think they wanted to spend the time to try to seek a change to planning and zoning regulations. But that's, that's guessing. It could, it could go either way.
I understand. I'm just wondering too, because at the planning and zoning meeting, when some of this had come up, they seemed very confused as to why it hadn't come to them and why they didn't have some of this information. They didn't seem to know what to do with it. And so I didn't know what kind of communication there is between the two parties to make sure that things are happening appropriately, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am? Yes?
Jessica Gannon, Plansky, ten thirty-nine North Farms Road. I just want to kind of reiterate what many of my neighbors have said and just stipulate that I think it was so incredibly reckless for this to have been rushed, as it was, when a handful of us, the only ones who at the time knew about it, really tried to get through to all of you to put pause on this situation. It's terrible to constantly feel like you have to be on the defense in your own, in your own town against people who are supposed to be serving the community. And I think that the fact that so much of our concern stemmed around serious health issues that can arise. Because one of the things that I had said to, or one of the things that I had asked Mr. Fasano and GOT Space during one of the meetings was, what, I just have to take a deep breath. Was what do you base all of these numbers on that you're throwing at us? Was there any scientific proof? And none was offered. So my point in saying this is, in the one town in Arizona, that this community is just in dire straits, which we made you all aware of. Their leaders thought they were putting safeguards in for this community, and they've all failed. They've failed miserably, to the point of class action lawsuits, which you were all made aware of. A handful of us said, please, don't go through with this because so many people in our neighborhoods aren't even aware that this is going on, and they're going to be as concerned as we are. And trust that the one, the ones of us here represent three, four neighborhoods. So I just think that, thank you to those of you who voted no on this and actually put the citizens and the taxpayers of your community first. Because I'm sorry, I don't care what the profit is. When you're dealing with potential heavy industry that is going to destroy the quality of our life, that's a really big deal. And at what point don't human beings come before the bottom line? And I just think it's a really sad state that we're in this position because we didn't have to be. We urged you, those of us who took the time to show up in these meetings, we urged you. Christine Todd, you live on our street, and you voted against your own neighborhood just because you're on the other side of sixty-eight. That's upsetting. That's alarming. People should come first, especially with health issues. And like I said, the safeguards of the leaders that were put in place in this one neighborhood that the leaders were so reckless to put it in these people's backyard, there's nothing pro to it. And it's very easy for all of you to vote yes and think it is a pro situation when you don't have to be facing the cons of it, facing the consequences of it. So I hope that whether this falls through and you have the opportunity to, if somebody else is going to come with this type of industry, I hope you're going to think about the people that live in this area because it's so incredibly disingenuous to vote yes when you wouldn't put it in your backyard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm not going to stop you from holding up that sign, but I'm going to ask you to move so you're not blocking the exit way. Thank you. I think that's all we have for this item. Onto item number nine. Which is discussion and possible action regarding the formation of a committee to discuss the ARPA funds and/or the setting, setting of a special meeting to discuss the same. Counselor Todd, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the purpose of this item, and I don't want to start with the motion because I want to kind of hear from the council where we would like this to go, and then if appropriate, we can maybe have a motion later on in the discussion. But I'm just going to read, just in case anybody didn't read the backup, because I think I sum it up in the backup materials clearly. So the purpose of this request is to allow the council to decide if it would like to formalize its involvement in the process of spending the ARPA funds. Based on several previous Town Council discussions, it seems that there is agreement that we be involved in the process to present possible ideas to the administration, discuss the administration's plan and process for the use of the funds, to become informed by the public, Town agencies, departments, the consultant, et cetera, of possible uses of the funds, have an opportunity to meet with the consultant to discuss the process and potential uses of the funds, and ultimately, in collaboration with the administration, to come up with a plan for the use of the funds. I know that we may not all agree on the best use of the funds. However, as the receipt of these funds is a major economic boost to the Town, I would hate for the council to only be able to voice its opinion at the point where the allocation of funds appears on our agenda because I fear that at that point, it might be too late to change course if the council is not in agreement over how the funds are proposed to be spent. As we all know, these funds come with timelines. It must be followed. So my, what my thoughts are, and basically this stems from, I know we've had multiple discussions about this on the council. I know we get public comment at almost every meeting about this. What I'm trying to avoid is just, we keep talking about it and bringing it up and bringing it up, and we're not, we're not going anywhere with this. So I'm trying to see if the council wants to formalize some sort of a process where we can be involved more, we can throw in ideas. If the consultant is hired, we can find out how we can spend the money. Maybe we have some ideas. The consultant can let us know if, if those are able to be used. So my, my ideas that I'm thinking of, and we can talk about which, which is best, or if any of these are good, would be to have a special meeting to discuss this. So we could just have a special workshop meeting where all we talk about is this. We can spend a few hours, however long it takes, hear from the public, hear from, I know there was a group here earlier that, that said they wanted to be heard. Once the consultant is hired, maybe the consultant's at the meeting, or if the consultant hasn't been hired, we can just make a list of all these ideas, and then the consultant can go over it. Or do we want to maybe have a committee? So maybe we want to formalize a committee, and that could be made up of the entire council. We could have public meetings again where, where we can hear from the public. Or if we're going to go that route, then do we want to create that committee, the December ordinance committee, to, to formalize that? So that's, that's where I am. I just, I think it's, there's so many ideas of how to spend the money. I know the administration has some ideas. I know the public has brought up some great ideas. We all have different ideas, and I think rather than just, you know, wait until the, the last minute, and then it's too late to change it or to come up with things that maybe we didn't hear about earlier, that this might, might be the way to go. So I'm just interested to hear what everyone thinks and if we want to do a special meeting or a committee or, or none of those. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, I do see your hand, and we're going to go out to the public after the council has a chance to discuss this. So. I'm sorry, sir, I. Sir, first of all, I haven't recognized you. I just let you know that you're holding your hand up, and I thought it was for this item. I did make a call for, at several points during the discussion on the data centers to give members of the public to speak. We also, we have a twenty-minute time limit on public comment on agenda items, and I certainly exceeded that, not insignificantly. Sir, because you're being persistent, I'll give you two minutes. If you want to come up to the microphone, identify yourself, name an address for the record.
My name is Ken Lloyd. I'm a resident, a resident of Wallingford at one ten Washington Street in our community here. And I, unfortunately, I do not mean to take up the time, but I came here at the end of the last session for the public part of it. So I want to just say something very clearly, that the Town Council made a mistake, and I wasn't aware of this until later on, when I learned as much as I could after that June meeting about what you did on your vote. I thank the council members that voted no on the GOT Space data. If you track GOT Space data, they have no centers or facilities. If you track Godspace data, they have no centers or facilities in Connecticut, they're basically speculators, Basra voted them down in a public hearing, and we need to do that on environmental issues, on water and inland issues, on wildlife issues, and no one's telling the farmers not to sell their farm, but this is a bad deal for our town, it's a bad deal, it was a bad deal for Basra, and those of you who voted yes made a mistake, this should go right to planning and zoning initially, you should never voted on it in June, it's not a town council decision, it's planning and zoning decision. And I've been in touch with the wildlife, with the Farmers Alliance in Hartford, and other farmers organizations that don't like what's going on here in Wallingford. And you might all sit up there and just be, well, you know, here we are, but the people that are here, and a lot of people that are on here, are opposed to this. I've been on the town green in downtown Wallingford with our banners, and people do not want this. They don't want a data center on 205 acres of farmland, when that farmland can be saved by state agricultural programs, and you folks need to learn about those programs. And if you don't, I have books here that you can have, not books, but pamphlets that were given to me by the Farmers Alliance. So you need to, you know, I, I came to this meeting tonight, because I heard that there was going to be a proposal to rescind the contract. What happened to that proposal vote? Where, who, you know, why is there not a vote on the, now someone told me that you can't vote on it?
What you missed is, what you missed is a discussion with the law department, we were advised that this is a binding contract, and we are not in a position to reneg.
And what happens if you reneg? Whether it's got space that are going to come down on your throats and tell you, you guys are now out of office because you voted against it and rescinded the contract? It was easy enough for you guys to vote yes, and now your law, the law department tells you, you cannot rescind the contract?
That's correct. I told you I'd give you two minutes, you're well beyond that.
Well, I think you ought to consider who you're representing in this community, and the people that gave you advice about the law need to reexamine what they're doing to our community by telling you that advice. So I thank you, but I disagree that you should have not been able to vote on that. You had it in the public records, and everyone knew that there was going to be potentially a vote, and now you're not doing it. So, you know, you're not representing the public, not on this issue, anyway.
Thank you. Counselor Todd, back to your item.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't, should I start all over again? I don't, I'm not really sure.
You don't have to start all over again.
I feel like maybe I should.
You really don't have to start all over again, but if you insist.
I mean, I don't want to waste everyone's time, but I feel like we've, we've lost, lost sight of the agenda here. I'll just, I'll, I'll just sum up again. My purpose in this is I want to see if the council, I think the, the ideas I had for this are either to have a special meeting, or to form a committee, and if we do want to form a committee, to see if we want to do that by ordinance. So I'm just, would like to get everyone's thoughts on if, if you like those ideas, or none of those, or where we want to go with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Chertel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What did you say, Counselor Todd, you don't want the council to keep talking and talking about something and not do anything? Why did you run for reelection, if you want to do that? Anyway, this is the place to go, to talk and talk and talk about stuff, and not do anything. I love this agenda item, I think this is great, but I'm trying to understand the illegality and the process here, so. I, your intent is to get council and public input into philosophically where to use this money? If I, you know, do we, like, like, the mayor has talked about individuals and businesses first, we may, I mean, I, I tend to agree with him on this, I think. But let me throw a scenario out then. So let's say, let's play this out, let's say that we, we schedule a public workshop on December 1st, I'm making up dates, I have no idea what day of the week that is, but December 1st, we do a public workshop just for this item, we get, you know, some people here, we, we, we talk it through, we, we have a, someone, you know, takes notes, we have a list, we come to a consensus that we want to lower the sewer rates. That's what everyone, that's what the public says, that's what we, we want to lower the sewer rates, that's, that's the thing we think is most important. So we turn to the mayor and say, we just had this meeting on December 1st, and we want to lower the sewer rates. Does that mean anything? Like, does the mayor have to take, I guess that's my first question for, for you guys, or for you, Chairman, like, does that legally, does doing all that, I mean, certainly, there's a public relations aspect to that, and I know the mayor would, 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 you know, absorb that, but I mean, the mayor is, the mayor bound by that in any way. And I'm, I'm honestly asking the question, I don't, I don't, that's my first question for anybody that wants to answer. Would you consider yourself, I'll just ask you, would you consider yourself bound by the public feedback the council would give you in such a forum?
Well, I, to do exactly what was stated at the meeting, you know, it depends upon what it is, but maybe not. You know, as I, as I stated, I, I think we have to follow the dictates of the ARPA, and those dictates, I'm trying to put together a, an overview of it, and then be coming to the council. I, I think there's a forum, and it's coming up beginning of December, that the Council of Government has established, and I'd, I'd like to absorb what will be talked about at that forum with regard to the ARPA. And at the latest, it would probably be the meeting in December, to come in with an overview, and then allow us to hire the consultant. And then I would think, having a meeting with a consultant there, you know, have a, have a full-blown discussion, whether it's a subcommittee or the council itself, I think that's very timely. I'm uneasy with making permanent decisions until we have a consultant who can help advise.
See, that, that's a great point. So, so you're, you're open to a public discussion with the consultant sitting here, under, under contract now, and the consultant can throw, sort of throw the flag and say, hold on, you can't, you can't do X, but you could do Y.
Give us some framework to be able to work through it.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mayor.
But just, just to, I mean, it's, it's going to take both council and my office, probably feed, feedback from some of the departments, but, and the general public, et cetera, it's going to take everyone in this process. No one has the authority to just go ahead and do whatever they want.
I, I don't think it's a matter of authority, and that, which was my, my question actually was all about authority, but I don't think, I think it's more a philosophy, and I think that, that there's, I think that's what Counselor Todd is maybe driving at, is just the, the sort of first step, you know, in terms of where do we go with this money, you know? Bob Gross would go a different way than what you're going, for example. So if, if the council all agreed with Bob Gross, or nine Bob Grosses up here saying, you know, do other stuff, I guess that's what we were, what I was getting at, but that.
Yeah, if, all of it will take some, and again, this is where I'm hoping the consultant will be of big help, because everything we might think would be appropriate, other than perhaps the area that I'm concerned about, that I've spoken about, will have to be vetted, because you can't do the same things in every community.
Right.
Some of it depends upon census tracts, I mean, it's.
Yeah, right, right.
It's, it's a, a lot of depth of, of understanding of what Congress was looking for, and what Treasury Department is setting out there as eligible. So, yeah, I, I really think, once we can hire a consultant, then, right, we should all be in the same room, and.
I agree, that, that makes sense to me. I, just, just a little commentary, I don't remember the gentleman's name, the new president of WCI, but.
Mr. Glidden.
Mike Glidden. Oh, that's Mike, oh, that's, okay. I should, I guess I should know who Mike is, I didn't recognize him. Oops. I did, you know, I was on, I took the kids over the, we were out somewhere, I don't know, it was a Saturday, we, we were going down Center Street, and, and we went to a few places on Center Street, and, and it's, what he said is, is, you know, is true, I mean, in terms of, I, we were at one business, and there was somebody else in the business talking to the owner, so we weren't, you know, I overheard this, and the person asked, you know, how, how are you doing? This is like in August, and the, and, and the owner was like, getting by, barely, it's kind of month, month to month. So this, this is, this is real, and I would not, just, you know, I think the, the focus on, on small business is not something I would dismiss. I do think it needs to be means tested, that's my only, you know, criteria would be that if, if, I hope there's means testing, whoever gets this money, that, that, yeah, you can show a loss, but if you're, if you've got a lot in the bank, you may, you maybe, you definitely don't need these funds the way somebody who doesn't, but, but I think, I think the business aspect is absolutely real. So that's just a little commentary, but thank you for this agenda item, Counselor Todd, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. You know, this, this is a really thorny one, because I, I agree with the mayor's philosophy as stated in general, but then, the reality is, so we put out the bid, we only got one bidder. So either there was something wrong with the bid, or there's, or the, the job is so esoteric that nobody wants it, right? I mean, other towns are handling this in, in a variety of ways. So I guess I have concerns that if we bring in a consultant, but it's the only consultant that bid on it, it does the, you know, and they charge 180-something dollars an hour, according to the bid, so then it, does this become a, you know, situation where the, the lawyer charges us for things that they, whatever's going to require the most time, you know, in billable hours for, for him? So I guess that's where my concerns are. I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to having a committee now to sort of help vet all this with the, with the mayor's office. I, I think that the biggest issue for me on this whole thing is transparency, and I think that, you know, the mayor sort of alluded to the same point, and, and that is that no matter who gets selected at the end, you know, where this, how this money is distributed, someone's going to cry foul, there's going to be someone that's not going to get paid that's going to be upset about it. So I think it's probably better to bring a committee in, and not necessarily a committee of counselors, but committee of public, or, you know, department heads, or, or WCI, or whomever, in the beginning, to try to bring some additional transparency to this issue. I do have a question, too, I guess for the law department, so this is, the town council has to accept the grant money ultimately, correct?
The, the town has the money, so it's a question of being able to spend it, and that would require an appropriation, but the money was sent to the Finance Department.
That's right, okay, so then we presume that it follows the same path as the budget, in that it would have to be a recommendation by the mayor, and then approval by the council? Is that the?
Right, well, the budget is an appropriation. The budget appropriates money for a given series of purposes, and that makes up the budget. There's funds beyond the budget, which the ARPA funds would be beyond that, and it would have to follow the same course, where there's an appropriation of funds authorized to be spent on a given purpose.
So, but I guess the, the foundation of my question is, the budget is spelled out in the, in the charter, as far as exactly how we handle it, you know, in terms of meetings and the, and the procedure? Because this is sort of extra budgetary money, does, do we have to follow the same process?
Well, yes, there would have to be a process of appropriating funds in order to spend them. So there'd be, let's, let's say we, whatever committee is going to oversee, the review of applications, hearing, you know, the, the requests for ARPA funds, they will have to be reviewed, a decision will be made to provide funding or not. That would either be done on a case-by-case basis, we'll have to decide this. I mean, is, is, whether it's Economic Development Commission, or the commission and some other people, certainly, anyone who's applying for the funds should not be sitting in judgment on the expenditure of them, but there, there, there's an application process, review of the applications, a decision is made, there either is initially an appropriation of funds for a given purpose in a general rule, or it could be every single application and an award of funding would be an individual request to the council to approve that. We've got to decide how, how we want to handle that. Obviously, everything involves the record-keeping, the, the explanations, the time factors involved, if it would, we, we could wait for every single council meeting to do it, or would the council want to be making, meeting more frequently in order to have that happen on a, on a more rapid basis? All of those things are going to have to be part of decision-making, and ultimately, however, in order to spend the money, it will require appropriation of funds, either in aggregate, or in, in smaller amounts, whatever. And they will be tailored to whatever the, the applications are, and recommendations made by a committee, ultimately, the council would have to agree with those recommendations, et cetera.
No, and that, that makes sense. But what I'm hearing, you know, in my head, I'm hearing a lot of billable hours, right? So this seems like the overhead of this is going to be somewhat onerous, which is why it'd be interesting, maybe, potentially, to get the, a committee involved ahead of time to do some of the research that perhaps, you know, there's no one in your, in the administration that say has the time or the extra time to look at, to see how other towns are tackling this, or, you know, items like that.
Any information is, is important information. Right now, as I've stated, I, I really think we need to have a consultant on board, hopefully they'll have some experience with this, and give us some general guidance, but any information is welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So am I correct to recall that the grant, not grant, but the ARPA program allows the consultant to be a, an ARPA fund expense?
That's correct, yeah.
And, and Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, I, I understand that that would be the process, it's just, you know, if you, you get X amount of dollars, you hate to spend a large chunk of it on the, the administration of the spending of that money?
And I appreciate that. Counselors Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I want to thank Counselor Todd for putting this item on the agenda, I, and I think it's a good idea. We go back to the discussion about transparency and letting the public get involved, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of different mechanics to this. As an example, you know, a, a local resident, Bob Gross, he comes up here quite a bit, and he brings up points about what we can use the ARPA funds for, and there, there's a lot of nuances to it. So there, there might be a scenario where one business gets declined out of this bucket, and people might want to know why. And they may not realize that that business may have already applied for funds independently and received them. There's a number of restaurants and businesses that applied for funding because of the pandemic, and were granted that funding. They probably wouldn't get anything from this, because they've already received something else. At the same time, I think there's, there's going to be a lot of discussion about what the people might want. And even if it's only advisory, it goes back, and, and the consultant says, while we can do X, Y, and Z, we may not want to do X, Y, and Z. And I'll, and I'll bring up the example that's been brought up a few times. Water and sewer infrastructure is right on, right on the U.S. Department Treasury use for this. It's been brought up a number of times by, by people that have come up to the mic. Making necessary investments to improve access to clean drinking water, and invest in wastewater and stormwater infrastructure. We can use some of these funds for that. We may not want to, we may have funding already set aside, we may have grants already available for it, we may want to bond it out because of our great triple, double, triple-A rating that we've got to, for bonding. We may want to borrow over time. When you, when you bond out long-term projects like this capital and infrastructure projects, you pay them over 10, or 20, or 30 years, as your payment rate will stay flat, but you're going to end up making more, because tax rates always change. So we may or may not want to commit some of these funds to that, but there's quite a few things that are the objectives of the American Rescue Plan. Things like decreasing the spread of the virus, which I think is going on very well right now, but it takes up money out of different budgets, so we might want to backfill some of those budgets with that. Replace lost public sector revenue, we could opt to do that as well. Support economic stabilization for households and businesses, and the mayor has been talking about that. Counselor Chertel mentioned that, you know, we really ought to means test it, but it's available for us to do that. So there's, there's a lot of different things that can be done for this, with this money. But I think, I think it makes sense to start with a small group of, you know, a, a committee and a body, and maybe like a public hearing, and hear what the people have to say, and let the people understand, there, you know, there's some things that we can do, and there's some things that we can't. And then there's some things that we might not want to do, even though it's permitted, because there are better, or more creative ways to do it. But I don't see the harm in this, if it's something that, that we want to try to, to request to do or set up, because it'll only make for that transparency and allow for the input, which a lot of, a lot of the people that come to these meetings, we hear it over and over again, I don't feel like I was informed. And who's to blame? Maybe we don't post something, or maybe they don't read it. But if we go out of our way to try to, to do something and invite them in, it's an extra step, and I, and I think it's worth doing. So, again, thank you very much for, for adding the item, and I really think we, as a body, should entertain it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counsel Tada, for bringing this discussion up. As you all know, I brought this matter up on three separate occasions, four if you go back to last year. And in each instance, I've made clear my hopes that the council would be intimately involved, intricately involved, both actually, in the development, not only the approval of the expenditures, but the development of the criteria by which applications are going to be received and discussed. And in every case, I was assured we'd be involved, but the discussion ends up leaving, leading to, you're going to be, you're going to have to approve them anyway. That's where it always goes. And I don't want to approve them. I want to be involved in deciding what they're going to be in the first place. That's what we should be doing. The council should be involved in establishing the program, not just approving the expenditures. That's what my hope has been all along. The more we get involved with using the consultant to take on those types of role, those types of activities, the further away from that we're going to get. And also, as Counsel Marone pointed out, the more of that money we're going to be spending on that. I did not expect us to hire a consultant to administer this money. I did not expect us to hire a consultant to help develop plans for how to spend the money. My understanding was we're hiring a consultant to make sure we didn't screw it up. That's why we hired a consultant, to make sure we had all of our, how many cliches can I find? Ducks in a row, Ts crossed, Is dotted, that cover all of them? You know, that's what we wanted a consultant for, to make sure that we utilize, that we spent the money according to the plans or according to the guidelines. And that's somebody that sits back and watches what you want to do and says to you, yes, no, yes, no, maybe. They don't develop it for you. That's not what we were told they were going to do. So I feel, still feel very strongly that I want us involved in all of these discussions. I want to sit down with a group of people, my colleagues and other people, and have a round table as many times as it takes and design the program. What are we going to give money to? Who's going to get the money? Who's eligible for the money? What, we should be establishing the priorities. We, the town council, should be establishing the priorities of how this money is spent. Others can help administer it, but we should be the ones establishing those priorities. And it, to this point, we're still, we're, that's all going to be determined by others and presented to us for our approval. And that's where we are, it's where we've been the last three times I've brought this up. So entertaining a committee, I don't care what you call it, I don't care how we do it, but there should be a group that is heavily represented by the town council, establishing the criteria and the plan and so on and so forth. So however you want to do it, I'm clearly in favor of it because I've been asking for it for six months. Thank you.
Counselor Chortel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I agree with all that, but wouldn't that discussion be more productive with the consultant sitting here? Okay, that, yeah, I mean, I.
Which is why I haven't done, brought up what Counsel Tada brought up tonight. I said, okay, I was assured that we're hiring the consultant, okay? And I was promised that we'd be involved when the time came. So I guess I was, we're getting there. Once we have the consultant, and then, then let's put together this group. I'm sure it's going to involve our people from our Economic Development Committee, Economic Development Commission. It very well should include potentially some business people from the community. Who knows who it involves? But yes, yeah, it should involve that person.
That's all, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't, I don't know that we need to wait until we hire, until we hire a consultant. I mean, I don't see the harm in us having a special meeting before that point to, I mean, obviously, we've already been talking about it a lot tonight without a consultant sitting here. So I think we can certainly meet with the consultant another time, but I don't know that we need to wait for that. And it sounds, it sounds like to me what's happening is, just by the way it's been going so far, is we're creating a massive bureaucracy here. I mean, you look at the PPP program, the SBA handled that along with banks. That was a massive bureaucracy to get that program, to get that money out, to make sure everything was done correctly. And I'm not sure how we are going to do that, you know, just either through our town or through a one person, you know, a consultant. So I have major concerns that we're, it looks like the way it's going now, that we're going to be spending a massive amount of this money to administer the money. And that concerns me. So I'm not sure that we need to wait for the consultant. I think that we can meet before that and talk about options. And we can get a wish list, if you will, or just get a list of ideas. And then when this consultant comes on, we discuss it with the consultant. We say, here's what we are thinking, what do you think about this? And we can maybe whittle it down from there because the consultant's getting paid hourly, it looks like, too. So I also don't want to, you know, have a six-hour meeting where it's just us all talking and we're paying somebody to sit here and then we really didn't need them until the second meeting. So I don't know that we need to wait. I guess I have one question about the consultant. Is, and, you know, shame on me for not reading through those, the bid documents yet, but is there a minimum amount of hours or dollars the consultant needs to get or not?
I don't have the response from the consultant in front of me. Certainly, we'll have an answer that at the, at the point we're going to hire them. You know, we'll have any questions answered that anyone has. But offhand, I'm not going to try to guess at it now.
Sure, no, yeah, fair enough. I didn't, I didn't look that up either. It just kind of came to me during this. Well, I guess at this point, I'm going to make a motion that we set a special town council meeting for the purpose of discussing, discussing the ARPA money. And I just want to also make 100% sure, Mr. Chairman, those special meetings do include public comment now, correct, for our rules?
They do.
So then that, I will keep that motion as is.
Second, so we don't have three counselors here tonight. I think if we had everybody here tonight, we might pull out our calendars and start looking for a special meeting date. And I guess if the council is in favor of, well, if the, if five of us are in favor of scheduling a special meeting in the remaining month of the year, then I would ask that we have the clerk pull the council via email to select a special meeting date. Counselor Chortel.
A couple thought, quickly, a couple thoughts. We could do December 7th. December 7th is the last ordinance meeting. So the date, everyone should have that date already. And that's two weeks from tonight, so that might be. And I don't know if we're even going to have ordinance because I don't know that we have anything on the agenda. But that, for counselors, that might be, it's a Tuesday night, so it's a night we're usually booked up, just a thought. I guess, you mentioned a six-hour meeting. Are we informing Counselor Fishbine about any of this or not? Anyway, don't answer that, forget, I think FOI we.
He'll, he'll read the minutes.
Yes, who's probably watching on YouTube from his, all right, his hideout, okay. So I feel like I've, I spent like five years and 10 months fighting for transparency. But on this one, I don't, I don't agree with having this discussion without the consultant here because I feel like it's more powerful. I want him or her, is it a him or a her? I don't even know. I want that person, I think that person should hear, hear it, not be handed a list. We all want to lower the sewer rates, or we all want to build a pool or whatever. I think they should hear it. And I think there's something in that dialogue, and the mayor is absolutely right. There's something in that, in that dialogue that the mayor talked about. And I want to have the consultant there and Tim Ryan there and I just, and WCI, you know, everyone there. Because I mean, someone could come to the mic with something that no one's thought of and then, you know, we might think that's crazy. And then they're all like, well, actually, South Windsor did that. And it generates, I don't know. I know there's, I get where you're coming from with this. There's a sense of urgency and we don't want to be left out. And I get where Counselor Testa is coming from. But I just feel like the mayor just told us when we hired the consultant, we'll have that meeting. I just, I don't know, I'm a little bit torn on this specific motion. But I love that you brought it up. I just think it's, it's better for that person to hear it directly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa.
The other thought I had is it would, it would make sense to me to have this take place with the new council. No offense to Counsel Short timer. I know he wants to be a part of this, he's dying to be a part of this.
I love you, Counselor Testa, thank you.
And I you.
I, I. Right, this is getting weird.
Honestly, our, our new colleagues, I think we're going to all be dealing with this. So, and we're heading into the holidays. Let the council get this person on board and we all get sworn in. And as soon as we can after January, we, you know, we get together. Maybe the first ordinance committee that happens in the new year with the new council would be a good time to do this. Maybe that's a good compromise.
Counselors Andrew.
Yeah, I, while I, I agree with your sentiment, the, there is a motion that we have to consider. You know, we're going to have to have to vote on it. And there's nothing stopping Counselor-elect Allinson and Carmody from attending. They can, they can come, just like any other member of the public could come. Matter of fact, it kind of behooves them if they're going to step in. I know personally, speaking for myself, even though I won't be sitting up here, I'm going to be involved somewhere because it's just the way I am. So, I mean, I, I don't see why we couldn't set this in motion. You have a public hearing, you collect some information and, and while it is better, you know, there is some argument that it's better to have the consultant here. Who says it's only one meeting? There could be another meeting, too. Yeah, it's going to have to be additional meetings. And, you know, maybe that first meeting is kind of a, you know, like a herding the cats meeting. Let's kind of get ideas together. Let's squash ones that just can't happen and explain to people why and kind of gather them up. And then when the consultant comes on board, it's more of a formal discussion. It's just something to think about. So that was, I just wanted to add, add my three cents to that, to adjust for inflation and.
Time value of money, yes. Any questions or comments from the public? Ma'am, name and address for the record, please.
Amy Walsh, 19 Quigley Road. I've been sitting through a couple of these meetings and thank you, Counsel Testa, for bringing this up. I think it's very important to try and move this forward. One question in, whenever detailed questions have come up, it's always been, well, we've got to wait for the consultant, wait for the consultant. So is the idea that the consultant would present a menu of ideas of this is what you can do with the money and we say, yes, we want A, B, and C? Or is it we come up with a list of ideas and the consultant says you can do A, B, and C? I don't know if that's a question for the chair or a question for the mayor.
Actually, the mayor's been dealing with the consultant issue, so I'm going to defer to him.
I think it's probably a little of both. There's a lot of procedural issues that have to be dealt with. What information we will be requesting from an applicant for assistance in order to justify an expenditure. That is particularly with the, the subject matter of households, small business, nonprofits, tourism industry as examples. So there's, there's a lot of procedural issues there that, that will require record-keeping, you know, a significant effort. When you get into the other categories, the lost revenue, premium pay, lost revenue, and then the fourth area is the infrastructure questions. They're, they're different in that they're governmental spending. So it's, the parties involved would be the usual ones with budget, council, administrative offices, et cetera, in determining what, what then qualifies. And that's where the consultant would be indicating, well, you know, you can do this, maybe not something else. It's, it's the projects that aren't clearly infrastructure that will require not only the procedural issues, but also does that fit within what the ARPA instructions are, the U.S. Treasury Department? So it's a little bit of advice, it's a little bit of, you know, hopefully they'll, hopefully they'll have some samples on what kind of information we need to collect in order to make judgments.
Well, if I may.
That's the way I, so it's not one or the other. It's depending upon the subject matter of what is in the ARPA, eligible under ARPA funds, how we make decisions and ultimately move through this.
And, okay, thank you. So that's kind, some of that is a grant management question of how do you structure the, the grants and for the qualifications for the applicants and how you do that. But then a question of, do we fund the sewers, just to take that example, versus do we fund small businesses? That's a, that's a strategy question. And that seems like something that would be appropriate for the council to discuss. You know, we want all of the money to go towards small businesses because $13 million sounds like a lot of money, but it's really not a lot of money. So there's going to be way more great ideas than we have money for. So I think it's a very wise idea to get the council and the community together to say, at the end of the day, after we've spent all this money, this is the kind of impact that we would like this to have. You know, the coronavirus epidemic, pandemic has, has really impacted Wallingford. And how do we want to emerge from this? And we've gotten this windfall and this is how we want it to impact. So I encourage you to decide before the consultant comes, kind of what the strategy is that we want most of it to go for these types of projects and some of it to go towards these type of projects. It's a little bit like, sitting here, I was thinking, it's a little bit like having a contractor for your house and saying, well, I'm going to have the contractor come and tell me what I'm going to do. You know, when really you should think beforehand whether you want to have a new kitchen or add a bedroom or whatever. So I thank you for bringing this up and I encourage you to have a meeting and include the community to discuss the overall strategy of how we want this money to impact Wallingford. So thank you.
Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road.
I don't know that the mic is picking you up.
How about now? Bob Gross, Long Hill Road.
Sure.
Through the mayor, through the chair to the mayor. Do you have any idea when you're going to hire this consultant?
Well, we'll be looking for the town to hire the consultant in December. I'm hoping at the latest it would be at the next regular meeting. But I'd certainly want it to occur in December.
Because as I said before, I'm not all for spending the money on the town. As I've said it before, the longer, other towns have done this already, and I don't know what Wallingford and the mayor is waiting for, that small business, certain small businesses are hurting. And they, but we're not spending any of that amount of money. They don't need a ton of money, as Mr. Glidden said. 10,000 goes a long way to some of these businesses. And I don't know why the town, other communities have dispersed money already. And I've already had the meetings and I praised Ms. Tada for putting this on the agenda and Counselor Testa also for putting it on the agenda. But we're not doing anything. This money's just sitting in the bank and the businesses, if you really, mayor, if you really want to help these businesses and if you say homeowners for, if they're going to lose their house, if they're going to lose their business, now's the time to do it. I don't know what's taken so long for any of this to happen. And though, some of the money should be spent for the better good of the whole community. Thank you.
Ms. Allinson.
Hi, everyone. Autumn Allinson, 126 High Hill Road. Thank you for putting this on the agenda. I do think it's an important topic. As somebody who will at some point be sitting up there with you guys, I would like to say, I think that really there needs to be a lot of clarity defined around what is and is not legitimate spending for ARPA funding. I know that on the Board of Ed, there, we have different rules. I think that if you do proceed with a meeting in December, especially ahead of a consultant being present, that that meeting should include some getting clarity for the people currently sitting there and the. currently sitting there and those of us who will be in the audience as to what the funds can be spent on because the reality is anybody can make a wish list of the things that we might want to spend project money or projects that we might want to spend the money on, but if it's not valid spending, then there's no sense in assembling it and wasting everyone's time to doing so. So I would say, it doesn't matter to me personally if you guys wait for us or you don't wait for us, but I would say that there should really be clarity between, as to the definition of ARPA spending, and that might be something that you can hash out in that meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. There are guidelines that have already been established. Other communities have spent the money. I suggested months ago that the mayor talked to CCM. They have already drawn up guidelines on how money can be spent. You can use them as a resource on how this money is to be spent, and other communities that have already spent the money on small businesses and done projects for their communities. Fairfield, Westport, they've already allocated all their money already and are in the process of getting bids to do their projects. And they range from domestic violence centers to community-wide projects for park renovations and things like that. And they've been all approved. So Wallingford just needs to move ahead and get moving on this to help the businesses that need to be helped and help the better good of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Counselor Tada.
Thank you. I guess I don't really hear consensus one way or the other as to whether we want to wait for the consultant or not. So the motion is on the table just to set the special meeting, and I would, I would request that we shoot for that December 7th date and see what the council's availability is, if that's okay with everybody. And if not, then you can, I guess you can say that when the clerk pulls us by email, but I would like to just get this, get this moving. I feel like there's, so many towns have done this without a consultant. I don't, I don't really see that we need to keep waiting and the longer we wait, it's just, we're just dragging it out so long. I just, I would like to get something set. So I'm not putting that in the motion, but December 7th would be what I would hope we could shoot for. Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Shortell.
Fine, yes.
Sorry.
Tada.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
And Chairman Sivoni.
There's no point to me voting no at this point. Yes.
Thanks for the confidence.
Mr. Chairman, ma'am, I interrupt for one moment. Wave rule five? Or I'm just going to ask. Mr. Baker at Lyman Hall was, wanted me to ask if any council members planned on attending the Thanksgiving Day game at Lyman Hall Thursday? And if so, he just would want to know to make sure he can get tickets and parking available for you? So I'm letting you know. And I probably should send an email out to all the counselors, but I'm letting you know now, it's only two days away. As you know, tomorrow afternoon is the Powderpuff game at Sheehan. We should have all gotten the notice that there's parking and tickets available for us as soon as you pull in the parking lot, the last driveway across from the field at Sheehan. But for Lyman Hall, Mr. Baker can make the arrangements. I hope you out.
I believe that the top Democrat vote getter is supposed to flip the coin, but which one? Is it the Powderpuff or the-
What's that?
The top Democrat vote getter for council is supposed to flip the coin every, was that you?
I don't even know how to flip a coin. Never flip a coin.
You're out of order in speaking falsities. You started the meeting this way before we convened, but thanks. If there's, Mayor, if there's nothing for-
Yes.
There is something?
There is an item.
Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
All right. The motion is to go into executive session pursuant to Section 1260 of the Connecticut General Statutes with respect to the purchase and sale or leasing of property moved by Counselor Shortell, seconded by Counselor Tada. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? I declare the council in executive session.